Okay, all right, we got everybody aboard here. All right, we seem to have everybody on here, so let's move forward. We can start on if we can, call the meeting to order if we can. And refer to our meeting, the first item on our agenda is any from the audience, and we have audience, we'll get to in reference to the Energy Commission here a little bit later. But right now, I need the minutes for October 4th. Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes of October 4th, please?
I'm moved.
So move by.
Ryan.
Ryan, okay, second?
I'll second it, Richard Durr.
Richard Durr, second, any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Close, so carry.
I also abstain.
Who, I'm sorry, so the secretary can get your name, who abstained?
Lucien.
And Mike.
Mike and Rich, okay? Okay, Board of Selectmen report, Jackie, you have anything to say?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I have three updates for you. Coming before the Board of Selectmen, most likely in November. I'm on a work group that, we've been working on the short-term rental ordinance, which is also an Airbnb ordinance. So that'll be coming forward. Zoning is working on the use of marijuana. And then that'll be coming before the Board of Selectmen. And the last thing is the accessory dwelling unit zoning is working on. And again, that will come before the Board of Selectmen.
By then.
As soon as they're ready.
Right, okay, good.
Those are my updates.
Anything to report regarding the Building Committee? No, nothing. Okay, moving on if we can. We'll start with Al Jakunsky with the Sinsbury High School re-roofing project. Al, update.
Thank you. We finally received an updated proposal from Greenwood for the adjustment of the seven-axis ladders. We estimated at the last meeting that was going to be about fourteen thousand. The actual number is twelve thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents. So a little bit under the estimate. I also asked Greenwood for a proposal to do some additional painting at the boiler room canopy. We had called out for all the new steel to be painted, but we did not call out for the existing railing and handrail going down to the boiler room, and also louver to be painted. Hindsight, I think they should be painted. I don't think they're going to be able to match the painted steel to the existing paint that's there. That proposal is one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. It's tedious painting because it's handrails and posts throughout that entire area. It's about twenty-four feet long, and I would recommend that we consider that proposal.
Okay.
Schedule-wise, just a quick update, if I could just continue. The roofers are actually off to site, all the roofing work and flashy work is done. The metal should be complete today. They're still working on the canopy trim work, et cetera. HVAC for the new ventilators that you approved at your last meeting. My understanding is they were out today to measure that. The soffit and edge framing of the canopy should start the week of the twenty-fifth, so the job is progressing. We have a meeting scheduled for nine o'clock this coming Wednesday. And probably after that meeting, we're going to do a punch list of the project, and that probably is going to be our last meeting outside.
Right, okay. Before we get into the change orders, numbers, does anybody have any questions or comments to make to Al regarding the roof? All right, hearing none, we have change. Okay, we have change order number one for the ladders, the seven ladders, for amount of twelve thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and thirty-two cents, so hear motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, any comments, questions? We were moving ahead on this, so we just got the numbers, so this makes it happen. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Close, so carry. Okay, item number two is the painting from Greenwood also, for the amount of one thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, so hear a motion? Motion?
So moved.
So moved, second?
Second.
Okay. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, so carry, very good, it takes care of those two. Al, do you have anything else?
Mr. Chair, just a quick correction, I think I said our meeting is at nine o'clock on Wednesday, it's actually ten o'clock on Wednesday.
Ten o'clock, yeah, okay. Anything else you want to add?
Al, the job is going good, I want to miss you guys, I think I may join you if the job is over.
Good, thank you, thank you very much, Al, good to have you, we want to move on because we got quite a bit to go here tonight.
Thank you, good evening.
Next item on our, next item on our agenda is a presentation for the Clean Energy Task Force. You've got a whole bunch of representatives here, but I guess we start with you, Mark, Mark Scully?
Yes, great, thank you very much. My name is Mark Scully, I'm on the Clean Energy Task Force and also the Sustainability Committee. And these two bodies are in the, are meeting jointly now and have very common interests. And the Clean Energy Task Force was formed around 2008, really with the goal of advising the town, you know, the town executives on clean energy issues. And since its formation, we've been instrumental in promoting clean energy, promoting energy efficiency, attracting some grants, which have enabled us to do some things like insulate town buildings. We've worked very closely with Director of Public Works, Tom Roy, and his team to do things like purchase the streetlights in town and convert them to LEDs. Pretty much every activity that we've done has ended up saving the, saving the town money. We've got solar on a couple of places in town, so our, our, our goal again is to promote clean energy and energy efficiency. And in the process, save the town money. Many of the things we do have a, have some impact, some of them are large, some of them are small. The type, the, the project that this, that this group is facing, the renovation of Latimer Lane School is one of those projects that, whose impact on, on the environment, on our energy usage, on our energy expenditures, on our greenhouse gas emissions, will pretty much dwarf everything, anything that this task force has, has done in the past. So we, we very much appreciate the opportunity to discuss with this group what this Latimer Lane renovation will entail. And if possible, to be at the table, to be presenting, to be presenting alternatives, to be suggesting ways of carrying out this restoration, this renovation, that is, that ends up with a, with a high-performance building envelope, that ends up with, you know, reducing our carbon footprint, ends up saving the town money as well in the, in the, in the process. So I don't, I didn't come tonight with an extensive presentation because I really don't want to get ahead of, of you all or ahead of myself. But I just wanted to come and really state our goal. First of all, as I say, our appreciation as being involved in this process. And our goal is to help this group and help whatever team this group will be assembling, whether it's the architects, the MEP, the construction managers, to promote a high, high-performance building renovation, including possibly a net-zero school. We've, in our work with other clean energy task forces across the state, we see that other towns have done this, many in other states. Most recently, there are two projects that are being built currently in the state. One is a new school in Mansfield, and one is a renovation in Manchester. Both are being done as net-zero schools. So for a slight additional capital expenditure upfront, these schools will essentially have zero energy costs going forward. So there are resources out there, there are people doing it right in our state now. We have access to them. We have an expert at Eastern Connecticut State University, Paul Torcellini, who has literally written the book on high-performance schools. So we welcome the chance to engage with you, with the architects, with the entire team, to, and I think in particular with the public. And I think you all are in the weeds of managing projects like this and know far more about this than I do. But my sense from what I've seen from other towns with this type of a project is if, I mean, unless we give the team fairly clear direction that this is what we want, that we want to build a, a school then do a renovation in a manner that is in keeping with our plan of conservation development and our leadership on environmental issues. Unless we give clear directions to those teams, it, it won't happen. So I think public outreach is going to be a big part of that. And I guess that would be my, a big question that, that, that I have is, where are we in the process? And how can we help? And how can we in particular get the stakeholder input from some of the different groups, including the Clean Energy Task Force, but most importantly, from the, from the public?
Mark, if I can, we of course have to get through the state of Connecticut, get state of Connecticut approvals, and our architects and all that, we have gone through the LEED Silver Program on all our programs. And that means signing up for a third-party service, so on and so forth. But Jeffrey is here from Tecton. Jeff, do you want to make any comments to Mark? Because basically you'd be the one to be handling this, I would assume, working with him if there's any changes. And the changes, of course, have to be approved by not only us for dollars and cents, but they have to be approved by the Board of Education and Jason, to be sure the Board of Education knows what's going on as well. So we just can't say, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and it's going to cost X because, number one, we have a referendum, and Jackie, the referendum passed so much dollars, and we have so much dollars to work with within that referendum. And we have, that's what our job is, to make sure the job gets done the way it was said it's going to be done, via the dollars that have been authorized. If there's more money, you're going to have to go back through the town and get an approval from them to say, okay, here's an extra ten dollars to do this, an extra five to do that. But Jeffrey from Ticon, do you have any comments?
Sure, thank you, Chairman. Jeff Wazinski, Tecton Architects. We did reach out to Mark earlier today to talk about the possibility of, of working with them to identify potential options. Obviously, we understand, we have a budget. The plan was to, at the next meeting, which is on November 1st, to present building systems options, which Derek Brides is also on the call at the meeting tonight. And at that time, we'll identify potential options for all of the things that Mark had identified as far as energy conservation, all the way to net zero, and options that can get you there. We obviously will do what we can within the existing budget and run every option by the Permanent Building Committee. But the plan at this point would be to fold, fold Mark into those conversations because we haven't really had anything, any kind of conversations on the, on the building systems right now. And I understand that's one component, building envelope is another. But we plan to put a package together for your next meeting, in-person meeting on the, on the first of November to present those options to this committee, so.
Okay, any comments from anybody?
Ray.
Go ahead, who was that?
This is Bob Beinsteine. So I also sit on the Clean Energy Task Force, I'm an engineer by training, kind of a sustainability and ESG practitioner by avocation. I run America's ESG practice for a large engineering firm right now. I have two comments. I think Mark's covered the task force's desire to be involved. The first comment, I teach a very specific course in infrastructure sustainability. And one of the things that I want to share with this group that comes from that course is that when you're talking about major infrastructure programs, major building capex programs, the longer you wait before you take these things into account, the less your opportunity to change them and the higher the cost. So as we walk through this project, but more to the point, to subsequent projects with public buildings, it's hugely important that we think about the entire lifecycle cost, not just the capital expenditure to build the project. But what's it going to cost us to run it over the thirty, fifty, hundred-year, depending on what the pieces of life of the project? So that's the first thing. The second thing is, I know Mark mentioned the school in Manchester. For anybody that's not familiar, the superintendent of Manchester lives in this town. She's a friend of mine and is hugely excited about this and is absolutely willing to have a meeting, have a conversation about what their thought process was in working through this.
I suggest you meet with Jason Casey from the Board of Education, who is the director of all schools here in the, in the town regarding, regarding that.
Absolutely, we'll do that. I, I guess, and I'll close with.
I'm sorry, Jason, I didn't mean to cover, I think you're the man that should be talking to that person, not us.
Oh, I agree, I'd like to take that meeting.
Perfect. And I'll close with just sustainability, energy efficiency. These paradigm shifts that we're engaged in are really important. And it's one thing to say we got to do them because it's important. It's another thing to say we got to do them because they save money. And I think you'll find that while it may change your capex, it'll also change your lifecycle costs. This is about what this project, any project is going to cost the citizens over the life of the project. And I'll leave it with that because I know you've got a full agenda, I really appreciate you hearing this out.
Well, we're aware, and we, we watch it on all our projects, and we normally go back to the architect and the mechanical electrical engineers to say, look, you know, we got to cover all these bases. And hopefully, they all do, and we're, we're very fortunate. I said we even already started here, we had the LEED Silver Program they're already talking about. And again, we got to talk money reference to the state, what does the state kick back into the program, so on and so forth. So these are the things that are all covered, we do, we were aware of them, but we do appreciate your comments. We do appreciate your meeting with other people that are involved in the projects. I have no problem with you meeting with our architect, I have no problem with you meeting with Jason Casey. And they'll bring back whatever comes out of the meetings, us here at this meeting, and we'll make the final decision. Anybody from our Board of Public Works have any worth, any comments to make? Anybody? Go ahead, Mike?
If, if this is something we're going to pursue, I'd be happy to volunteer to be on any subcommittee and attend these meetings and report back.
Okay.
Same here.
Lucien, yep, okay.
Brian Burns has his hands, hand up, Dick.
He up, Brian, he up, see him, Brian?
Thank you. Just two short comments again, I think it's been referenced. Certainly, I understand the value over the lifecycle of the building is important to consider. But again, reimbursability is something that's really important at this point. So in the discussions that you're having with our design team, if we could make sure that that's something that we understand, we have to make decisions on sustainable systems, where that falls in the reimbursability and what costs are going to be borne by the town versus what we can be reimbursed, this could be educated decisions. The other issue that I just wanted to raise, because it's already a bit of a horse that's out of the barn, but that this team may be interested in discussing is the boiler issue. I don't know how much that this team has already been appraised of the fact that we recently purchased boilers, not this group, but the town, that are going to be brand-new and we aren't going to want to just throw them out. So you guys should be informed on what the status of that is and be in discussions over how that's going to incorporate into our, you know, sustainable vision for the building at the hall.
Ryan, that's why I suggest you sit down with Jason Casey and kind of go through what we have, what we don't have, what we better go, and where we might go, and what, you know, what he's going to try to save and move on to another school, so on and so forth. Because there are other items that we talked about before, as you well knows. So I think Jason might be the right contact for that with these fellows.
Correct, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none? Again, Mark and Al, thank you very, very much, appreciate your comments and look forward to have you meeting with these other fellows and go from there.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on if we can. Before we get to Latimer Lanes, I see some people sitting here from Downs. Does Downs have anything to report on Henry James? Frank?
Nothing tonight, Dick. I think Steve was here last week and finished up with the last report, so we're just listening in Latimer Lane.
They saw faces from Downs, I didn't know if they had something to report or what. So I saw your face and Frank's face, I didn't know if they had something to give us up to date or not, so.
Nope, we're done. The last report submitted by Steve ended our roll, I believe.
Okay, thank you very, very much, I just wanted to make cover base.
Thank you.
Uh, next item on the agenda is Latimer Lane renovation, Arcadius, Jack?
Good evening, good evening. We've, we've been making progress. Tecton can speak to their, to their efforts in the last couple of weeks. But I've been working with Jeff and Jason to get the commissioning RFP tidied up and out the door. That's on the street now with responses due on the twenty-fifth. We've gotten some questions already, question period is open until the twentieth. So we, we think that there are at least three firms that are interested so far.
Back up one minute here, though?
Yes.
You say RFPs, RFP for commissioning services is due on October twenty-fifth, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and then the RFP for construction manager is due on November eighth?
That is correct.
Okay, just want to make sure those dates, because you had them together and they're not.
Yep, so we have, question period for the commissioning is, is on Wednesday. We've already gotten a few questions, so we know that there is interest out there. There are folks who have asked us to send them the documents rather than pulling them down off the web. So we do have some responses coming there. For the construction manager, that RFP is, is out. We've got the general conditions with it, which is a pretty voluminous document that's in the hands of the attorney right now for review. I'm still finishing up the agreement document that coincides with that, and they'll have that into, to the town for review before the end of the week. So all in all, a lot of our table setting is, is underway. And we should, we should be in pretty good position to support the design team. Obviously, the dates that you'll choose for the shortlisting and for interviews for the CM are important. Let's hope that we don't have any interruptions.
Commissioning service also.
Yeah, commissioning, right. The, you know, as, order of magnitude, the, you know, the, the level of effort on the CM is, is a.
Is a large one.
Is a big, is a big step. Right now, we're, we're hoping that we'll have the recommendation for the commissioning emailed out to you soon after the, that the submissions are here, you know, no later than, than.
I assume all of us will get a copy of them, we all got a copy to see them first, make your recommendations, but to be, the board will look at them, and the board will then probably want to interview. I don't know, depending upon what we get, I mean, a decision will be made once we see the responses we get from the RFPs.
All right, but all that will be packaged and on its way to you in advance of the November first meeting.
Okay, good.
So you'll have that to work with.
Any questions so far from anybody on the committee? Hearing none?
Ryan's got his hand raised, Dick.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Ryan, you're up in the corner, I couldn't see you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no problem. John, if you wouldn't mind, I assume we're doing an A133 for the CM agreements?
That's correct.
When you're at a place where you think you're at a, where you like the, what it looks like to send out, if you wouldn't mind forwarding that along, I, I would love to take a look at that before it goes public.
Sure, I'll send everything through Jason, he can distribute.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Hearing none? Okay, anything else you want to report on?
That's it right now, we'll turn the floor over to Tecton.
Okay, our architect, any comments on Latimer Lane? Tecton, where are you, where'd you go?
I can give you a brief update since our last meeting.
There you go, Jeffrey, yep.
Yep, real quick, GL Technical Report is expected this week. The wetland flagging has been placed on the survey map. We're expecting the survey, survey field work is completed, and we're expecting the map and the electronic file this week. Once we get all that, we'll send it through Jason as far as, for, for record purposes. The traffic counts, as I had mentioned last meeting, are completed, and we're awaiting the report on the traffic. The existing BIM model or the Revit model of the existing conditions is completed. So we have the structural engineer completed the frame, the existing frame and foundations, the MEP put in the existing conditions and architectural as well, so we have a good.
Have you seen, have you seen any major problems?
No, not at the moment, no, not at the moment. So we've got a good, solid baseline to start our design options from. The field verification scanning, we haven't been able to schedule yet just because that needs to be off hours, so we'll get that completed as well. We obviously, Jack already mentioned, we reviewed the, the commissioning and CMR RFPs with, with Jason and Jeff. We, as I mentioned, we did reach out to Mark at the Energy Committee, and we'll continue to coordinate with them. And we have finalized the contract for signature, so that's in as well. As far as next steps, our next, I believe our next in-person meeting is on November 1st, for which we plan to present two, two major pieces, the MEP design options and energy impacts. That will be one piece of the presentation, and then the second piece will be the design refinements. We were asked to take a look at the site plan, building plan modifications, as well as exterior envelope, and then any modifications to the phasing logistics plans that, as we go through, through the building, so.
And that's coming forth on November 1st meeting?
Yeah, that is correct, yep. And we'll prepare a presentation prior to and submit it to Carol so that you can have it, I think it's Friday, yep. So we'll, we'll submit it, I don't have that date in front of me, but it's.
Write it to Carol first. Yep, Jason, do you have any comments? No, I don't. Okay, anybody else have any comments, questions?
Could I chime in real fast? This is Derek Bride with Consulting Engineering Services. We are the MEP consultant working with Tecton Architects. As Jeff mentioned, we're, we're going to be prepping for an 11-1 systems presentation to you guys. If there's anything specific you've learned from any of your past projects, any lessons learned that you like, don't like, anything you want us to specifically look at, please send that information through, and that way we can tailor the presentation specifically to you. We will bring multiple options from traditional school design to net-zero sign, like Jeff said. But again, if there's anything specific you want to say, please send it over, and we'll gladly incorporate it within that presentation.
Any comments, anybody? Hearing none? The cover Latimer Lane, I guess at this point.
Done, thank you.
Okay, Ryan?
Two, two quick questions, just going through, if we could, I'm just trying to get my head around the schedule. After looking at the RFPs, I'm seeing a substantial completion date now in January of 2024. That's our current schedule that we're going to put out, we feel comfortable with that?
Tecton, anybody?
I, I can answer that, yeah. Jack, myself and Jason went over that schedule just to make sure that they were coordinated in the CM RFP. We're comfortable with that. We want to make sure that they, from a, from a cost perspective, to protect the town, make sure that they have their early release packages in their.
And they're the ones that are going to go back to us and say, yes, we can do it, or no, we can't. So we got to wait for the responses from these people, Brian, before we can say that's a good day or a bad day.
No, I understand, I just want to understand, because the second piece of this is you're releasing it in two phases with a May 22, first phase begin, is that correct?
So, I have, hold on. Are you looking at the CM RFP or my last presentation?
No, no, the, the RFP.
Yeah, the, this is Jack, the, the trajectory we're on is to get the first phase done, ready to implement in the spring of, spring of 22.
Okay, so is that what we had been talking about in the last meeting? With that, you know, rush package to go out right away?
Correct, the site, the site steel and concrete, you know, has a enabling phase for the additions to get that, you know, perhaps, you know, perhaps in March if the weather works for us.
Excellent, okay, that was, those were my only questions, thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other comments, questions?
Oh, sorry.
Hearing none? I would say that Latimer Lane is over and done with, let's move on. Other, the other, we have a, our next meeting coming up would be November 1. Jeff, is that November 1 going to be okay, the day before the elections?
Nobody's said anything, so yeah, I think it'll be fine.
Seven o'clock at the library, in, in person?
I believe so, we got to confirm the, the room.
Yeah.
I believe we have a reservation for it.
I think we do, but we'll double check and make sure we do, go back. Any other old business?
Just tentatively the fifteenth, again, for the next special meeting.
A special meeting, November fifteenth.
So it's on everybody's radar.
Yep, okay, November 1st and fifteenth.
And at the fifteenth, hopefully we'll have CM proposals, correct?
Right, by then, yes, yep.
Yes, we should, should have that package here in time for that.
Yep, good. Any other comments? Any other new business? Hearing none, oh, yes, Mike?
I got a question about the, the timing of making decisions on the MEP systems. To me, it seems like it would be helpful for us to have a better feel for budgeting, and if we're going to be able to make that work within what the referendum was for. But it seems like we're going to have to make a decision which way we're going well before we get any numbers from the CM.
Well, we have numbers already through the architect, do we not?
That's not the CM. And that doesn't explore what the different.
Well, we don't know what CM's going to charge us, we normally wait for their smittles, and we make a decision from that, once we get a, but we'll get more than one, and we go from there, look through them and see what they have, and go from there.
Right, so are we going to know what MEP system we can afford without numbers?
Sound like we're going to know.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, I think Tecton may have budgets when they present the various.
Wait a minute. I think Tecton may have budgets when they present the various options.
Go ahead, Derek.
So if I could just chime in real quick. So what the plan of attack would be was I'm going to present multiple systems to you next weekend, our next meeting on the first. And at that time, I'm not going to be looking for commitment. I, I fully expect we're going to go through the schematic design phase carrying more than one option. I want to hone it down to probably two, if not three at a maximum, and then carry those three through schematic design. That way we can get them estimated by our estimator. Then you probably have your CM on board at that time. And then as we get into early DD, we can hone in that decision. But we have to make sure that we hold that date in order not to hold up the schedule. But I do understand it's a very large decision. There's a lot of moving pieces. And yes, we want to make sure that you can afford the right system for you and that we're, and if you're pushing the sustainability initiative, that we're really trying to maximize the amount of dollars spent and that we can afford on those systems. So.
Couple of choices, basically.
Yeah. So I, I plan on bringing you multiple choices and then together we'll look to refine it to a list of two to three and then carry those through for costing. And then if you want any more LCCAs or ROIs on those, we can work that together with our estimators, with the CM, and then with our energy modeling programs.
Lucian? Derek, you think you have time if, at the end of November, we don't know what kind of systems we have. You have December where we have the holidays and whatnot, and then you have half of January to finish the job. Do you think you have enough time for design?
For, to finish DDs?
No, to finish the job because I understand that we have to be done by the, I don't know, end of January.
No, that's not the, what's this, Jeff, what's CD date?
So there's a early release package, um, which would be site concrete and steel if, if we decide to proceed in that direction. That would want to be out in the February-ish timeframe, but DD goes through like mid-February and then CDs, the rest of the project goes basically up to, to my last schedule that I presented up to about May, May 23ish.
So. So what are, are we going to the state?
Uh, well, you, you, we're going to go three times, you know, during SD, um, DDR and, and PCR. So those were identified. Um, for DDR will be, you know, first or second week in February, PCR, um, will probably be the, the third week in May, um, leaving a couple of weeks to, to get approval to go out to bid. So, um, the early release package would be on a different track, but that would be, uh, site steel and concrete.
So if we go out to bid in May, when are we getting the bids back?
So I have, they're not going to start construction until late summer.
Late summer, right.
Right. So I have, um, July, June. So after basically late June, beginning of July is, I, I have the whole month of July and the last week of May, um, for bidding and leveling. So I got, I got about five weeks in there.
No.
But you're going to be working on an advanced package, which is.
Yeah. So. That's a separate.
It's, yes. So it's not, not that you're starting construction at the end. It's just that those items come, come in.
Come in, right.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So, so major, obviously for the steel, if it's going to be all early release, we can do it one or two ways. We, we want to identify the major pieces of the equipment so that if we need to support it, we, we fold it into the steel package.
Yeah, I, I believe that's the way you have it outlined in the, uh, the RFP.
Yeah.
My, my dates were a little bit more ambitious than that, but, you know, to, uh, to, if nothing else, can, can convey our sense of urgency to the CMs and let them know that, uh, this is not going to be, uh, you know, a leisurely walk through the park, but that we're going to be pressing to get these packages out and get it under construction as quickly as we can.
Right.
So basically you have MEP by the end of May, maybe, Derek?
No, it's usually before that. So what happened on my last school that we did where this, again, this is a, this is an ever-moving target with sustainability being a huge focus. So on a current design that we're doing, uh, for a current high school, what we ended up doing is coming to a consensus on internal systems. So we decided to use, um, hot water, chill water DOAs, chill beams, radiant panels. We kind of came up with that system design. But then we left the plant design up in the air. We decided to either go with obviously boilers and chillers or geothermal system. So what we did was we carried the geo design and the boiler-chiller design into DD. And then ultimately let the budget and the ROI and the committee tell us which way to go. We were able to spend a lot of our time and efforts inside the building detailing that because that's the, the largest piece of the puzzle. And then now as we're getting into the DD phase, we were able to look at the budgets and decide which direction to take. So again, we didn't wait till the end of DD to make it and we didn't wait till the beginning to make all decisions. But I think if we can talk next week about options and kind of hone in some of those options and maybe we can say, um, what we're going to do inside the building, we can then focus our efforts on that and then worry about the plant design then. Because if we are going to go sustainable and try to get some geo in, that's usually your largest cost. So that's the biggest wild card out there.
We got to have some, have some options of which way to go. So this is what you'll present at that time.
That is correct.
John?
Yes.
You have anything else to say?
Uh, no, I, other than to echo, you know, Derek's comments about, uh, presenting the options, I've been through this same process with CES on a number of projects. It's been very informative, very enlightening to the committee. And, uh, they do a good job of facilitating the discussion. So it's, it's quite, quite a wide, wide range of options.
Long range.
Yep.
Good. Any other comments from anybody? Hearing none? Do I hear a motion that we, uh, call tonight?
I moved.
No move? Second? Okay. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Here by a journey meeting and thank you very much. And, uh, we'll see you again in a couple of weeks.